As council president, I now call the city council work session for April 12th at 7:00 PM. Would Councilman Peterson please lead us in the pledge? And Councilman Larson, would you do the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to be here and serve on the council, to help and to make life better in our city of Riverton. Father, we are thankful for the weather. We're thankful for the opportunity to serve. We're thankful for the support which we receive from the city. Please bless us that we might be mindful, be able to adequately review and discuss the budget. Bless us with insight and understanding. Bless us in Riverton. Thank you, Father. We say this humbly, "Name thy son, Jesus Christ." Amen. The city clerk, please conduct the rule call.
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Council President and Acting Mayor Lee Martinez.
So we do have a quorum. I declare that we have a quorum. The chair would entertain a motion to excuse Mayor John Lyles Baker from tonight's meeting.
Motion to excuse Mayor Baker.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Mayor John Baker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed.
Your Honor, we have one.
Yeah, but I...
Are we okay there? One, two, three, four, five, six, we're pretty much close, five. Holly Gibbons is absent.
Your Honor, she's running late from soccer, it sounds like.
So she will be here then? I declare that we have a quorum. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with one addition. We will call 5A. And that's the Children's Advocacy Group from Casper here to make a presentation, Ms. Heather Ross. So I entertain a motion to add that to the quorum, to the agenda, I'm sorry.
Your Honor, I would move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the agenda as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Now I need to entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment.
Motion to approve the agenda and the amendment.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay, you're up.
Well, thank you. Must've been some miscommunication. So, thank you for adding me to your agenda today. I drove up from Casper and luckily the roads were completely amazing. So, I was very lucky to come on such a lovely night. My name's Heather Ross. I'm the Executive Director of the Children's Advocacy Project. Some of you guys might recall that I've come in the past to request funds from the city of Riverton before. What our program does, we're actually located in Casper, Wyoming. But for anyone who's new, we provide a service for your law enforcement investigators, your Department of Family Services investigators, as well as your county attorney when they're investigating victims of crime. Specifically, those victims being children under the age of 18. The majority of our cases are alleged victims of child sexual assault, but we also work with children who have been victims or witnessed domestic violence, kidnapping, homicide, and other activities like that. So, we've been providing services in Casper since about 2002. We've actively served Fremont County during those years. Within the last few years, we were able to open up a center located right here in Riverton. We had that center up and running for two years while we tried to establish full-time funding so that way we could establish a center and keep it running. Unfortunately, the state of Wyoming had other choices with their funding and we were not granted additional funds to keep that program up and running. So we had to shut down the Riverton Center, but we're still pleased to be able to offer those services in Casper. One of the reasons I come to you guys today is I make this trek across the state of Wyoming to ask for funds from various city and county municipalities to keep our program open and running. I'm not sure how many of you guys received our annual summary report, but if you have a copy of this, you'll notice that there's a map of the state of Wyoming. And on the map, you'll see the number of services that we provided for each county. Does anyone need a copy? No? So you'll see that there's a map for each of the counties. Last year, we provided 323 forensic interviews to children who were alleged victims of child abuse. Forty of those cases came directly from Fremont County. So a pretty significant portion of the cases that we conducted. In fact, 12% came from Fremont County. Out of Fremont County, the majority of those cases came from the Riverton Police Department and the Riverton Department of Family Services. The forensic interview is really kind of a unique service. We're only one of three programs across the entire state that conduct forensic interviews. There is a program in Jackson, one in Cheyenne, and ours in Casper. As you can see from the map, we serve about 2/3 of the state of Wyoming. To be able to provide that service, we do not charge anyone for the service that we're providing. Instead, we ask for some support from municipalities to be able to keep those services up and running. The amount of funds that we've received from the city of Riverton in the past was $4,500. We're asking for that continued funding. This is not different from any of the other counties that we serve. In fact, many of the counties, we request a total of $6,000. So it's very in line. As you can see on the funding requests, that although we provided 12% of our interviews for Fremont County, we're only asking for about .9% of our overall budget. $4,500, whether it sounds like a lot or a little, it ends up being a lot when it comes to our operating budget. Many of our funds come from local city and county funds. When they're interjected into the entire budget, whether it's Carbon County or Big Horn County, Washeki County, Converse County, Platte County, they all go into a fund to help provide the services that we offer, mainly being able to hire our forensic interviewers to be able to conduct that service. So that's us in a nutshell. I appreciate the chief being here today. We, like I said, we were really sad that we had to close down the Riverton Center, but we truly believe that we're still being able to conduct business in an efficient and feasible manner for all of Fremont County and being able to get the best services possible for your child victims. Do you have any questions I might be able to answer?
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Bailey.
Your Honor, I guess a couple of questions. I assume that since you don't have a center here anymore, that you just travel here to do the interviews as needed?
Thank you for asking the question, Councilman Bailey. Actually, what we do is the child drives to Casper. They're usually brought with a parent who is providing the transportation. And then law enforcement, Department of Family Services also come to Casper to watch the interview as it happens. It's really important that the investigators are right there as it's happening. The interview is conducted in a small interview room with just two chairs. It's a member of our staff, a forensic interviewer, and the child. But it's fed into a live feed through a TV into the other room where the actual Riverton Police Department investigator and Department of Family Services would be watching that interview. So in the past, when we had the Riverton Center, that was the ultimate goal, is that we would be able to provide that service here. Unfortunately, due to lack of funds, we were just unable to continue to support that. We ran that program for a little over two years before we had to shut it down.
And then my other question would be, do you also go ask for funds from Lander and Fremont County?
Definitely.
Or are we the only one in the county?
Yes, sir. No. We go and ask for funds from the Fremont County Commissioners, who have been very generous in the past. We hope that generosity will continue. I believe last year, they provided $8,000 in funds. I'm sure you guys are all well aware of your neighboring cohort, city of Lander, whose funds are being really used to supplement a community center. And so they have not been able to make the choice to fund us in the past. So we've received $0 from the city of Lander in the last few years.
So is that a list we could get of who's contributing how much?
Yes, sir. Definitely. Yes, it should be listed in the budget.
All right. I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you for pointing that out.
Councilman Canaan.
Yeah. How many, I guess, I'm looking at the cover letter that I got.
Yes.
Said, "How many interviews were done in Fremont County?"
Fremont County, last year, we conducted 40 forensic interviews.
This says 15. And then it says for Riverton, you did seven.
I'm sorry.
It's in your cover letter.
Oh. I'm not sure why that is. I am sorry about that, Councilman Canaan. On this, here you'll see that the actual forensic interviews conducted were 40. I apologize for any typo or error that was done on the letter itself.
And of your personnel, it says here that you have, I guess, looking for six and 17. How many of those are interviewers?
Three are forensic interviewers and counselors combined positions.
So only three.
The other positions, myself as the Executive Director, we have one position that is an office manager. So currently, we have five total positions. Next year, we're looking at increasing that to six total positions. That would include a child advocate, child and family advocate. The child and family advocate's role is to really help the family through the investigative process as well as the prosecution, to keep them informed of what's happening, help them fill out paperwork, to follow up with them, make sure their children are receiving counseling. What we see is you'll be familiar with child advocates or family advocates or victim advocates, as they're sometimes called, with local law enforcement agencies, with domestic violence shelters, and their caseloads are way below 300. And so we're running a very high caseload for a combined position. Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Now, it's my understanding that we can't make a decision tonight because this is just a work session, so we'll have to wait till the next meeting before we either approve or disapprove your funding request.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Your Honor, the other thing that we're doing is it's going to go in front of the Finance Committee first, and then they'll recommend what their recommendation will come to the council.
That again will be next week, right?
No. No. People are just now submitting what they want in ways of budget to us.
So it'll be, when will we?
It possibly could be next week if we have them all turned in, but I'm not sure if we've got them all in yet.
Okay.
So it could be the first meeting in May.
That's fine. We completely understand because we work with so many different city and county funders. My first approach is try to beat everyone's deadline. And so chances are, I send it often a little time sooner than some counties and cities are expecting. So I completely understand with that.
Anything else? Councilman Peterson.
Chief, can we get Chief Broadhead just to kind of speak? I think he's the one that deals with this. Would that be your perception, chief, on this? Is it something that's worth continuing, pursuing? I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but...
Sure. Your Honor, if I can just address the council with that. So just to kind of put it in context, I'll try to be brief, but it's a little bit of a complicated issue. When children, particularly young children, are potentially victims of like sexual abuse, we only want them to be interviewed one time, right? So they don't have to continue to rehash the event. We also have issues at court when a child has been asked the same question too many times. There's a potential that they can start trying to answer the question the way the interviewer, that they perceive the interviewer wants them to answer rather than answering honestly. Because, you know, a social worker will question them, a police officer will, you know, and at some point, they go, "Well, they keep asking me. I must, should be able to say yes," right? So we're really concerned about that. So by having a forensic interview, who, that's what they do for a living, by conducting those interviews, they ask the proper questions, they're not leading questions. They are trained to, you know, let the child tell the story. And then when we get good, collected interviews, that becomes very good evidence to use and it precludes, in many cases, the child ever having to go to court, which would really be a hard thing for, to put a young child on the stand and have them, you know, cross-questioned by a defense attorney. And so if there's a good interview, those are videotaped. The prosecution, the defense can watch those, and then we don't end up having a child in court. So I'm a big fan of forensic interviewing. I'm a big fan of having outside professionals who do nothing but that essentially, for us to refer our cases to. Our investigators do travel to Casper and they're there. So if they have additional questions, they don't feel like were answered adequately, they're there to slip notes to the interviewer to make sure that they get their questions answered. But that allows us. It really is something that we would, if we didn't use the Child Advocacy Project, we would have to contract with someone to do that for us. So from our perspective, it's an invaluable tool for us to use.
Anything else? Anybody else? Thank you, Brim.
Of course. Thank you very much. Now we're going to jettison homes. Good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the presentation of 2015 year-end annual report. City Administrators' Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. So first off, I would just like to thank all the employees for the city of Riverton. They do a great job for us and this annual report shows all the things that the city is involved in. Each department put together their own report and then Megan compiled it all into one report. And so I'd like to thank everybody that put their effort into preparing this. It is amazing, all the things that the city's involved in. Sometimes you forget all the things that we do. So I'm going to briefly go over some of these. You're not going to, I'm not going to go through each one in detail. That's why you have a copy in front of you and encourage you to read it in detail later on. So here's a picture of all of you lovely people. And a little message for myself there. A couple of projects that we've been working on for many years that have been accomplished in 2015, kind of 16. The first was Wind River Job Corps. That was something that has been going on for at least 10 years, if not more. And that was finally accomplished and dedicated in the summer, this last summer. The Honor Farm property has been worked on for over 10 years with trying to do a land swap, and then more recently to purchase it. That occurred today. And someone purchased that property, a private developer, and hopes to develop that in the future. So that was good news. So that didn't necessarily happen in 2015, but pretty close. And then the final one was air service. That was something that was worked on for many years and that was finally solidified in 2016, but a lot of it was done in 2015. So we'll start with Administrative Services Department. That's under the direction of Courtney. So we have in the Administrative Services, we've got Finance, Human Resources, Utility Services, Municipal Court, Information Technology, and Facilities Maintenance. In the Finance Division, you can go on our website, you'll find the budget is on there along with the audit report. So that's available for the council and also any members of the public. We've had a clean audit for the last couple of years, so that's a big kudos to our Finance Division. And then under the key trends, one of the things I wanted to point out was capital outlay projects, either completed or construction in progress, significantly increased our net position by over 500,000. And that was from a lot of the projects that we completed in 2015. Human Resources, that's Christian Watson. The Human Resource Department spent nearly 115 hours on two major cleanup projects, which include liquor license files and personnel files, going through and making sure all the documentations are in all those and they're organized. This year, an employee assistance program was introduced to all city employees and their families in an effort to give our employees an avenue to help with everyday stresses in life. Utility Services, we have a combined total of 76 years of customer service experience in the utility services. That's pretty impressive. They have a large volumes of calls. Everything goes through the front there that are received by City Hall. One thing I wanted to point out, interesting calls that they've received in this past year. A citizen called asking if we can tell him where his deceased father is buried. And so oftentimes, you never know what people are going to be calling about. A lot of it has nothing to do with the city, but they look at us as an information center. So they call us up and we're able to help them out. Utility billing clerks process 720 applications for service. The average number of utility bills generated totaled 4,876 in the amount of $564,241 per month. Municipal Court, this is Lila Thompson and Megan Miller. Just right at the bottom, I was going to point out, the court's revenue for 2015 totaled $150,883. Also in 2015, the court had 5,255 open cases, including 1,508 new cases. Information Technology, that's Tim Hugus and Adam Wirick and Alex Inglehart. And he's back there in our room right now. Obviously, the two largest projects they worked on was the first, our sound system here in the City Hall, in the council chambers, and also in the court. At the end of the day, we gained the system stability that we needed for so many years, digital recording, remarkable sound quality, and much more. So that was a great addition and they put a lot of time and effort into that. Facilities Maintenance, under Keith Jones. Few projects they worked on this last year was refurbished Public Services Office. They helped with the new security access control project and installed retrofitting LED lamps in both Airport Terminal and City Hall. They also have been working on refinishing the trim here in the council chambers, if you've noticed that. The division provided 40 hours of snow removal services around City Hall, the Airport Terminal, and a lot of the bike paths and walking paths around town. Community Development Department, under Sandy Lures. There's quite a few pictures in this one. Obviously, we had the grand opening of the Wind River Job Corps, which was a big project for the Community Development Department. That ceremony was held on October 5th, 2015. The department expended over 350 hours of inspecting on that project. Lovely picture of Sandy. She probably didn't want me to point that out. A couple of the commercial projects that went about. We had the Moss Orthodontics up on Sunset, Little Caesar's, Dairy Queen, and a remodel in the Country Cove. In our mapping department, by Bob. He shot 2,144 GPS shots of manholes and sewer main lines, 309 sewer service lines, 2,585 water main lines and fire hydrants, and 255 water service lines. Down there to the right is a picture of an inspection while performing on the new Willow Creek Elementary School. This is a picture of our Construction Board of Appeals, which assists the Community Development Department with issues affecting building construction in Riverton and hears and decides appeals from orders, decisions or determinations made by the building official. And they have started the process of going through the codes for the new 2015 codes that should be adopted in July 1st, 2016. And so they have a lot of work ahead of them and they've done that in the past. Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments. The Planning Commission reviewed 17 plots. They had zoning and rezoning hearings. They had three of those. Variance requests at six. Home occupation permits, 26, and daycare permits at 11. Couple more projects that are listed here. Fremont County School District 25 had a couple of projects. Obviously, the bus barn remodel and then also the Willow Creek Elementary. This is Christie Peterson and the Permit Technician. They performed over 1,500 inspections in a year. In 2015, they issued 12 residential permits for new homes as opposed to eight for eight in 2014. There were also four duplexes constructed in 2015 compared to one in 2014. We issued 39 more residential construction permits than last year and we issued 53 more commercial permits in 2015 than in 2014. And they completed 12 more plan reviews than in the prior year. So if you look under this table, in 2015, there was 480 permits issued compared to 427 in 2014. Code Enforcement Division, this is to help maintain and improve the quality of life in Riverton neighborhoods by enforcing the violations to ensure... by enforcing the violations to ensure public compliance. As you can see, there's a lot of things that the code enforcement officer works on and cites people for. All the way from abandoned vehicles down to weeds and fences and hazardous waste. Total violations, 480 for 2015. So in, this is in our, along with code enforcement, there were 133 weed cases compared to 111 we had in 2014. This kind of just gives a breakup of the time spent on the code enforcement. Obviously, we have a lot of pictures that are taken, phone calls, letters sent, emails, and photos. So this is the Police Department Annual Report, under Chief Broadhead. We had three new officers join RPD in 2015. And also one new dispatcher. Couple of activities that they're involved in is shop with a cop. And that's been in the 10th year. Also, they partnered with the library to show the film Havana Curveball. Anybody ever seen that one before? There were two incidents in 2015 that shook the community. Obviously, the child that was killed in the crosswalk, struck by a vehicle. And then the second one was the male subject who entered the Center of Hope and shot two people, one fatally. We also have a lot of groups in town that are trying to work on our alcohol problem. Two of those are the Solutions Committee and Volunteers of America. All of these efforts have dramatic impact on the issue. Custodial situations solely for public intoxication are in a steady decline. And we attribute that to the many people that are moving to help this problem. Calls of Service. We had 13,056 police reports in 2015. Under Patrol, in 2015, officers issued 1,229 traffic citations, 1,610 written warnings, and officers arrested 1,822 persons in 2015 for a total of 2,539 offenses.
Can we interrupt real quick to ask one question? Chief, over, and looking at the burglaries, do you have just a reason as to why the big jump in that? That, I mean, that appears to be the only one that really dramatically increased. Do you have any guess as to what caused a jump from like in the 30s to all of a sudden over more than double?
Your Honor, we looked at that pretty hard, and there was no pattern to that. We didn't have a specific, like a pattern burglar that we caught that had, you know, done, had been individually responsible for a lot of burglaries. I tend to think it might be one of those statistical anomalies that, you know, maybe we had clusters in January and December that typically are spread out between years. I really don't have an answer for that. We could not find a pattern to it.
That seemed to be the only number on the whole graph that all of a sudden seems to kind of blow up.
Yeah, I really suspect that in 2016, that number's gonna return, you know, much closer to normal, and then we'll have to take a look at it. Really, I think statistics, particularly when we're dealing with such a small data sample, really, we need to look at those in, you know, three, five, and 10-year increments before we even see a trend. And I really don't think that there's anything happening that's gonna create a trend for burglary, but we'll just have to watch it.
Under Use of Force. 2015, officers used force during 72 separate incidences. This continues a significant downward trend in the use of force by RPD. Under Training, in 2015, members of RPD attended 2,381 total hours of training. Under Detectives, this year detectives filed a total of 31 felony cases with the prosecuting attorney's office. Interestingly enough, we have a prescription drop-off here at City Hall. It's out in the foyer there. We had 459 pounds of medications. That includes packaging that were destroyed. That's a lot of medication. Victim Witness, in 2015, served 243 newly-reported victims of crimes, as well as 23 anonymous victims seeking information. Animal Control, during 2015, there were 1,148 animal-related calls in Riverton. And then here's a picture of our school resource officers. We have three full-time school resource officers. And they do, they had to do a lot from helping out in the schools to coaching and mentoring and serving as a liaison to the district for our children. So then we go to Public Works. First is the airport. Obviously, we've seen, talked a lot about the airport. We saw 3,632 employments this year, down from 7,842 in 2014. We have a great crew up there. They work both as aircraft rescue firefighters and then also as police officers. So they do a dual role there. Obviously, our big thing that happened in 2015 was the major reconstruction project on the runway. Assets Division, the fleet consists of over 250 pieces of equipment, from lawn mowers to road graders. And then in the Lands Division, they replaced 50 stop signs throughout the town, replaced crosswalk signs with the new green signs, and put in some new crosswalks. This winter, and the Streets and Alley's crew changed how they plow snow. By plowing the snow to the sides, they were able to clear streets sooner. This type of plowing doesn't take as long as they were able to plow more streets in a faster amount of time, and it's safer for everyone. Also, the Streets and Alley's crew, along with Parks, helped with our rec and with the skate pond. In Ways of Recycling, the amount of yard waste collected by both city pickup and drop-off was at 2,112 tons. There were 991 tons of recyclables diverted. On the Lands Division, Parks. They maintain an estimated 111 acres, including 13 parks, baseball and football fields, trail systems in their facilities. The Parks Department installed three pieces of playground equipment at Teeter Park, which replaced 35-year-old equipment. A new handicap accessible entrance was added to the south end of the playground at J.C. Park. And four benches were placed on a five-foot by eight-foot concrete pad for parents to observe their children playing. And then we also had the addition of the skate park in City Park. Under Weed and Pest. We started fogging earlier in 2015, started on June 16th. The mosquito season lasted longer than usual and ended on the 2nd of September, which was three and a half months. In that time, we went through roughly nine drums or 495 gallons of... Well, I thought it was something else, but anybody pronounce that?
Bug spray.
Insecticide.
Yeah, insecticide. This is in our Water Treatment Plant. The total for 2000, no, wastewater treatment, sorry. The total for 2015 was 708.56 million gallons, with an average daily flow of 1.94 million gallons. It's a lot of treatment. In our BioSolids, which I always put a plug in there for BioSolids. If you want your garden to grow really well, get some of those BioSolids and mix it in, and they will grow really well. This year, we sold 73.5 cubic yards of BioSolids at $10 per cubic yard. The wastewater treatment plant has 173 major pieces of equipment and over 120 pieces of support equipment. Collection and Distribution. There were 29 possible sewer plugs reported. Approximately 8,070 feet of sewer main jetted, cleaned because of problems, and an additional 41,880 feet as a preventative maintenance. The department also viditate approximately 11,000 feet of sewer mains. We had 12 water breaks. And the Meter Department had 29 new construction accounts, installed 54 miscellaneous meters, installed 29 frozen or damaged meters, and replaced 797 MXU batteries. And those are the, those are the devices that sit on top of your meters so they can read it through the radio waves. Also performed 1,250 utility locates in response to Wyoming One call. In the Water Treatment Plant. They operate, the Water Treatment Plant, the well field, which is 14 wells, three booster stations, six reservoirs, and several crucial valves within the distribution system. There was no EPA violations in 2015. And they treated approximately 754 million gallons of water, compared to 729 million in 2014. Ways of Capital Projects that were accomplished in 2015. We had the Big Bend Drain Ditch, which was tied up with South Federal. Pumping Facilities Project. Security around the new tank up near the Job Corps. The city also continued upgrading the water treatment plant with the high-surface pump project. City replaced 16 defective fire hydrants around town to help improve the water system. 1% funds, we had three neighborhood concrete projects, four resurfacing projects, and one accessibility project. The city's infrastructure currently remains with approximately 68.2 miles of sanitary sewer mains, 67.9 miles of water mains, and 125.6 miles of paved streets. And that's just a few pictures of some of the capital projects for 2015. The one that stands out to me is this old high-security pump at the water treatment plant. That looks, that looks pretty rough. So it definitely need to be changed out. So is there any questions about the annual report?
I don't hear any, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Preliminary Budget Preparation Discussion. City Administrators Report.
Yes, Your Honor. So if you could open up your WHAM handbook, I thought we'd go through a few of these things to help understand the process. So the first one is on page six. I was gonna just highlight a few. The state of Wyoming creates its budgets based on revenue forecasts, not on actual revenues received. And the Craig Report that you've heard once in a while, which is the consensus revenue estimating group, is the official estimating body for all revenues received by the Wyoming State Government. In January of 2016, the Craig Report reported that the current biennium was 32 million in the negative. And then the state would be 438 million short of revenue in the upcoming biennium. That's the budget that we're going into. The Governor Mead has been a strong supporter of cities and towns. He was recommending $90 million for cities, towns, and counties for the biennium. And the legislature did three things. First, they increased the distribution from 90 million to 105. And then they changed the distribution formula, which was beneficial to Riverton, and we'll talk about that later. And then they also, they changed the yearly distribution from August. It used to give us a lump sum of these payments in August, and now we're gonna get it in August and in January. Okay, so let's move on to page 17. So all state shared revenues are distributed to cities, towns, and counties through formulas set by the state legislative action. So in this handbook, we're gonna go over a few of the revenues that we receive from the state. That's cigarette tax, federal mineral royalties severance tax, sales and use tax, gasoline tax, special fuels tax, which is diesel, biannual direct distribution funding, paramutual funding, and Wyoming Lottery. So the next one on page 18, cigarette tax. This is a tax on anything, you buy a pack of cigarettes, and it's 12 cents per package of 20. 20 cigarettes. So this is just what they are, and then we'll get into the funding and how it's gonna affect Riverton. On 19, federal mineral royalties. This provides that 9.375% of up to 190 million of federal mineral royalties, not including coal bonus funds, received by the state of Wyoming annually will be distributed to cities and towns. The distribution formula is unique. First, each city or town has a population over 35 receives a base of $15,000 per year. And then it's calculated on the average daily membership, as you can see below here. So you can see a calculation of what the city of Laramie would get based on the mineral royalties. And it's a fairly complicated scenario. So then we move over to severance tax. The severance tax is, to cities and towns, is derived by a 9.25% share of 155 million distribution funded from severance tax on all minerals produced in the state. And this, the basis of distribution is based on the population. On 21, sales and use tax. In 1994, the state increased the sales and use tax to 4 cents and decreased the distribution to the local governments by 28%. In the 2000 legislature, they made this permanent. In 2002, the legislature approved the increase to the common local government share to 29%. Starting July 1st, that was moved to 30%. And obviously, what WHAM does with the basis of estimation, they give you a lot of, particularly with sales and use tax, really based on your local area. And you really need to focus on what, what the past has been, not necessarily based on what the whole state would use for revenues. So the current distribution is 31% to cities, towns, and is based on a two-part formula. The taxes are first returned to the county of the sales transaction, then divided among the county, it's cities and towns, based on the percentage of the population. So that's how the money comes back. We get 69%, I mean, the state gets 69%. 31 comes back to the county, then they divide that up based on population. Gasoline tax is 13 cents per gallon. Distribution of the taxes is falls 57.5% goes to the state highway fund, 13.5 to the county, 14% to county road fund, and 15% to cities and towns. Special fuels tax, which is diesel, that's a 13 cent per gallon. That's on page 23. And 5% of that goes to the cities and towns. On the distribution, 5% share of the tax based on the ratio that the total population of the municipality bears to the total population of all municipalities within the state. So as you can see, a lot of these formulas, I mean, there's not a lot of rhyme or reason to them. And they're fairly complicated. Supplemental direct distribution, that's what we've talked about in the beginning. This is the over-the-cap mineral revenues that flow through the state general fund to this account prior to the general session. And so the legislator approved the 105. It will be split up in two payments, which may be an issue for us in the sense that we're used to getting that upfront. And so there won't be as much cash flow to sustain us through the year. The other thing that we didn't get out of the state legislature is we have no county consensus money. So that was zeroed out. What, and we'll talk about the money a little bit later here as we go on. So then we have Paramutual Commission. So then we have paramutual commission. Riverton doesn't have that, so we don't get any money. It seems like we did have that some time ago. We did have paramutual, they were doing in bombers, but they obviously don't do that anymore. So there is some revenues that come back to the cities if you have paramutual bedding within your, within your city. The Wyoming Lottery, this is, this is a new source of revenue for the city. They finally have paid off all their debts, and now they're ready to start distributing it. It says until June 30th, 2022, the first $6 million in each fiscal year of these monies shall be paid by the treasurer as they accrue to the treasurer of the counties, cities, and towns for payment in the respective general funds. The percentage of the balance will be distributed to each county, and its cities and towns will be determined by computing the percentage that net sales tax collected attributable to vendors as defined in Wyoming statute. And so we'll be receiving a little bit of revenue, it's not a lot. So.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So what that means is that you're gonna get receipts based on your sales tax.
Yes.
So Riverton with Walmart will vendor better than lander without Walmart.
Yeah, and you can, you can really see that when we go through the actual numbers here coming up, you'll see how some get very little and some get quite a bit more.
Thank you, Tribes.
So the first one is the cigarette tax on page 28, and you just have to scroll down till you find Riverton. We're estimated to get 72,674. That's up by $3,227 from the year before. Then you go to the federal mineral royalties distribution, which is on page 34. And we're estimated to get 669,044. Last year, we had, we got 666,982. So this will be up about $2,000. Then we have under-the-cap mineral severance tax, and this is on page 36. Riverton is 396,209, and last year, we were at 397,159, which is, so we're down $95. What's also interesting, I don't know if you've noticed this as you go through these tables, is the populations they use in these are all different. There is no rhyme or reason. Some of them are 10,615, some are 695, some are 10,900. And so it's all, can't get a rhyme or reason answer for that.
So you're saying Riverton, excuse me, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
You're saying Riverton doesn't have the same population in all the calculations?
They don't, Your Honor.
And that reason is, we don't know.
Yeah, I, I think it's, 'cause you have two, you have two populations that are, that are set forth. You have the census that comes out every 10 years, and then you've got University of Wyoming that adjusts your population every year based on building permits issued, and so that goes up. So apparently, these are all have different numbers that they use or come off of, instead of saying, we're just gonna use the census for all of them. 'Cause I think, I think the University of Wyoming had us at 10,917, I think is our population, but if you go back to our census one, I think we're at 10,617. Then you go over to the sales tax one, and this is, if you look on page 39, for Fremont And these are for fiscal year 2015. They're showing off to the right there what, what they thought we would generate was, was And then the next column over is what we generate in our 1% sales tax, that's optional, at 1.7, which, that's slightly above what we actually budgeted for last year. If you look in the middle column, they're estimating we'll be down about 20% in sales, Okay, then you go over to page 45. This is for fuel tax. And it's estimating Riverton will get 348,539. That's up by $2,539 from last year. So not a lot of increases, a lot of these are just a couple thousand dollars. Same thing on diesel, if you go to page 48, Riverton at 130,830. Last year, we're at 130,000, so we're up by $830. And then the direct distribution that we've talked about before is on page 52. As you can see, Riverton last year got 876,922. We're estimated this year to get 1,182, I mean, 1,182,062, which is an increase of about 305,140. And that, that is because they changed the distribution, and it favored us better. Some towns got less, some got more. So in our case, it was beneficial to us. And typically, with these kind of monies, since we can't count on them every year, we've never put this to operations. They've, they've went for third-party requests, contract for services, or we've put it to And then you go to the next one, you got the paramutual, which doesn't apply to us. So if you go over to page 56, this is the wild lottery. As you can see, they're estimating we're gonna get $10,414 for the year, which is not a significant amount, but every little bit helps. And that is the, is there any questions about? It's really is a good handbook to go through, there's a lot of great information in it. Encourage you to read it and go through that. Now, so we go back, now we've reviewed the monies from the state, how is it gonna affect our budget? So some things that we've talked about as senior staff is, we're gonna, we're gonna have status quo on personnel, meaning we're not gonna be trying to add any new positions. We're really lucky this year in ways of insurance costs, ways of liability.
Question here, Mr. Larson. We're not gonna add anybody, but if we, if we stumble and fall on our recycling knife, will that cause any reduction?
Most likely yes. I mean, if we have to do away with recycling, then we'll probably.
I don't mean it that way. We don't have to do anything but live and die, but we have to abide by the solid waste management. So if they choose to cease and desist on recycling, that will affect us how?
Well, affect us in the sense that we'll have to determine what to do with our own recycling program, and that would be, we've got personnel dedicated to that, we have equipment dedicated to that, so those things would have to be looked at or reduced of those, because obviously, we're not gonna continue to have staff go around and pick up nothing, so.
Well, that would be a reduction possibly.
And we may have to do reductions in staff if, if, I mean, we're just in the process now, we did revenues last week, we're gonna be doing expenditures this week. When we go through that, and, and there's a big gap there, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions, so. But I guess our goal is to kinda keep it as best we can. So back to insurance, particularly in health insurance, which is always our biggest one, this is the first year we have a 0% increase. We haven't seen that since, I've been here, I think every year since I've been here, we've had 10% plus. So that is a, that is a big bonus for us this year. We have a minimal increase to our dental, but it's only $2,500 for the, all the employees for the entire city, which is very small. No workers' comp increase, minimal increases to audit services. Even, even though we will be receiving additional monies from the state, like I said before, we're not gonna be getting that consensus monies. That consensus monies, we've typically used for capital projects. And that is money that flows to the county, and then the county group gets together for all the cities, and we decide how we're gonna spend that money. Excuse me. I think for contract for services, you know, we had one coming today, we may have to heavily look at those in ways of, of any sort of increases or maybe even little cuts here and there.
Your Honor. One more question. When you said those services, last time you came out, was it last year you gave us an 18% guidelines reduction?
No, year before.
Was it, was it four?
No, it was a year before.
Year before.
Oh, yeah. For the contract for services, yes. Yeah, that was the year before, that's where we.
And we didn't follow through with it, so.
The issue that we're gonna have with contract for services, in my mind, there's some on that list that if we didn't provide it, the city would have to. And so if you tried to cut some of those, then trying to provide it yourself would cost more than that. There are other things on there that are not directly related, they're great causes that provide great services for the city, but it's not necessarily a city function that has to provide that.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
So obviously, and I'd explained this earlier, with the third-party requests or contract for services, these will, we're sending a letter to everyone that currently receives funding from us. We're gonna ask them to submit what they're requesting, some justifications for that. That will go in front of the finance committee, they will review that, and they'll make a recommendation to the council as to what should be the best funding options. If you, if you look over council goals that we set a couple months ago, there's a few of them in there that require money. Obviously, it's all gonna be based on budgeting and how we can make that happen. One of those in there is restoring pathways like pavement restoration and lighting. Obviously, that's gonna be some cost, so. The other one was increasing our code enforcement, staffing a little bit, so we could have a little bit more of that, and then supporting the splash pad. So when we talk about all these actions, it's, it's all gonna affect the budget overall, and it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tight. And so we're gonna have to look at all options. One thing that Courtney brought up on this, supporting the splash pad, is that we have a community gas grant that we get, it's about $7,000. That could be something that we could earmark or put towards the splash pad. It may not be what they're expecting, like we gave to the skateboarders of like $40,000, but it would be at least something, because it won't be built for another year past that, so it'd be something that'd be carried over. But I think those are the kind of things we're gonna have to look at to make this work. Some of the projects that we have, have to fund this next fiscal year, we obviously have North Federal, which is water and sewer improvements, and then the stormwater. And, and that may be where we're restricting funds in our cash balances so that we can have that for the future. We've already done that for, for some of them, but we may need to do more. Airport, we're, we're gonna have some expenses there. Reduction in revenues because of the incentives and the loss of TSA and/or Great Lakes. I mean, we're gonna have some, and we're gonna have to make it up through the general fund that way. Also, additional monies for the MRG and Forecast Inc. In our police department, we have something that we have to address in, by August, and that's a wild link radio system, and we're estimating that's gonna be somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of 250,000. We thought it was gonna be 500,000, but the state is willing to give us grant for about half of it. So those are kind of the musts that we're gonna have, that we have out there that we've already committed to. And then there's obviously gonna be other needs that come up, but we're gonna have to be looking at all of that this next fiscal year to see if we can even make those happen. So I guess my question to all of you is there, is there any questions about the budgeting process? Are there items that you'd like to see in the budget, or we wanna make sure that the budget process is as transparent as possible? We'll also be setting up individual times for council members to come in and visit with staff and go through the budget, answer any questions on a, on a one-on-one basis. I know that helps out, so are there any questions or comments?
Counselor Bailey.
So overall, if you take all these projected numbers that you just rolled out to us, where do you think just total funding, are we up 10%, down 10%? I mean, where, where are we at? Or is it too early to tell?
It's, it's too early to tell. We, we may know my, more by Friday, but it's really hard to tell. Like I said, we're estimating the revenues right now, and then we're working on expenditures, meeting with all the departments, and then we'll combine those and see what the gap is.
And then in addition to that, in this process, is this where we look at sewer and water rates and that kind of stuff too? Or is that a totally separate process?
Your Honor, typically, we've done that in a work session with water and sewer rates. The, the problem we're facing this year, and Mr. Butterfield was just telling me, is that the CPI that we have is actually in the negative. And so unless we justify it based on capital improvement projects, which we could, that would be the justification for increasing rates.
Which, I guess, that's one of my major concerns, is with the future expected expenditures we're gonna have with the North Federal water sewer, storm sewer system, you know, I think we need to be a little bit, you know.
Proactive.
Proactive in the situation, and making sure we build up some reserves. And I think we actually have maybe been a little lax in the past, not getting a 2% or 3% increase with, you know, cost of living kind of an increase, and keeping those reserves fattened up, because, you know, those, that's a big old project coming down the road, and we're not gonna have the reserves to pay for it, so.
Well, if, if it's a desire of the council, that's certainly something we can bring forward and, and bring a recommendation to the council, because the way it's written in the ordinance is we're supposed to bring it, I think, every year and, and at least up it by the CPI, but in this case, it's actually a negative. So we'd be happy to do that, because we're as concerned as you are about making these projects work.
And then if I can ask one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
With regard to staffing and wage levels, is that the discussion we're gonna have too in this process? And I'm just concerned, for example, I think there's some departments within the city that we may not be paying up to what I'd call statewide average, and there's probably some that we're paying more, and I guess we need to look at those. Again, with this economy changing, you know, there's some places to look there to see if we're still competitive and fair and all of that too, so.
Your Honor, we haven't really dove into that, that much, because we thought this year, we're not gonna be able to do much in ways of personnel, just because if anything, we're, we're staying the same or dropping. And so once you open that can of worms of doing research or studies on those, if you don't then follow through with what you find out, and I don't know if we could follow through, because then we would be paying out more instead of paying less. But that's.
I, I don't know the answer to that, but I guess it's something that we have to look at in the big picture also.
Yes.
CPI, you've thrown that around, what is it? Trying to keep up with everything. What does it stand for?
Yeah.
It's, Your Honor, that's the Consumer Price Index.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I wanna make sure I wasn't trying to come up with my own. I had some weird definitions going on in my head, so.
Counselor Larson.
CPI is what they give old people, increases in their welfare benefits, like Social Security.
How many years?
You're not getting any. We're doing away with it. As of, if you're over 55, you get it, if you're 54, you don't. Anyway. Anyway, how much time does, do we get on the budget committee to go over this? Will we get a special session, or?
Yes, we will have a work session that can be one or two days, I think we have scheduled in, well, it's right in here, if you look at your budget calendar.
It's obvious I haven't.
Yeah, so if you look on May 9th to 13th, preliminary budget discussion with council members, and then the work session is scheduled for May 17th.
Okay.
And that's with the council. We'll also be doing one with the finance committee, too.
That's what I'm.
Yeah.
That's all I'm talking about.
Oh, okay.
Finance committee.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the whole.
No.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I'm not gonna be here next Tuesday, so can we push that so I can be here for it, since I'm chair, or how does that work?
The finance committee?
It's in May.
Oh, May.
Yeah, May.
May.
So, ex-nay that idea. So my other question is, is that, I mean, I've kind of heard, I guess it's not all 100 percent, but we've kind of heard that certain people are retiring, and so are we gonna be replacing those positions? Are we going to just do away with them? Are we gonna outsource them? Like, what's your plan for that?
Your Honor, I think for a lot of them, I think we're gonna be replacing them, but a lot of it's depending on looking at maybe restructuring. It may be that these certain positions need to be looked at a little bit differently. And not necessarily that... So you have a position they leave, and the only way you can really figure out what you wanna do with them is kind of leave those for a couple weeks and determine where's the best way to maneuver them into other departments. But, yeah, we have every intention to at least cover our bases of what we have right
Anybody, anything else? Thank you, sir. The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the council work session.
Your Honor, make a motion that we adjourn the council's work session?
Any discussion? All those in favor, if you say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.